Presentations for all students on 504 and IEP plans. We also have special presentations that occur. Every year we have Tom Mazza, who is the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, to review the budget for the special ed programs. And in the past, we had authors such as John Elder Robinson, who wrote the book Look Me in the Eyes: Growing Up with Asperger's. This year, we have two special presentations. One, a literacy speaker, Tara Pagliano, who is a licensed speech language pathologist in Massachusetts and Connecticut, and a certified Wilson Level Dyslexia Speaker. She'll be speaking to us about ways to encourage our children to read and teach us also ways to help and engage struggling students with reading. We also have a presentation by the Federation for Children with Special Needs on effective communication.
To contact Megan and I and vice presidents and treasurers and secretaries, feel free to go to the SEAL website at sealma.org. You can also find us on the link to SEAL website under the parent tab on each individual school's website. We encourage parents to reach out to us so that we can help them with support and networking. Next slide.
Stop the share.
We had one more slide, I think, that had some dates of our upcoming meetings.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Go back to that. Well, there you go. Sorry about that.
Perfect.
These are the dates of our upcoming meetings for the remainder of the 2021 year. You can find these dates also on our SEAL website. All of our meetings are by Zoom right now. If you would like to be added to the SEAL distribution email list, please contact us. At this time, we would be more than happy to take any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Committee members, any questions or comments? Gianna.
Yeah, I just also want, well, thank you again to Megan and Diane and to all the members. I also just wanted to make a special mention of the parents and guardians who are involved already with SEAL. They also offer, you know, huge contribution with their insight and their own experiences with their children. So that's a big deal, too. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Can I say one more thing? Thanks. The really, the main purpose of SEAL is really for parents to support parents. And in coming forward, sometimes it's a little difficult for parents who have a child with special needs to come forward and reach out and ask for help. And it's always good if you have another parent to talk to. And that's really what we're about. We're about making connections for parents to rely on each other. And we'd like to see our numbers grow since we have a very large group of children in this community with special needs. So I want to thank you all for really letting us present tonight and for Gianna for reaching out and getting us on here. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Yeah, I just want to echo Gianna, Diana, Megan. Thank you so much for the great work that you're doing. I think it's really important for all of us on the committee and in the district to recognize what you showed us, right? Which is almost 25% of our students have special needs. And I really like what you just said, Diane, reminding parents that SEAL is there for them to help them reach out and really make connections. And I think it's important to remember that we have a great support network for our kids, led by Jean Fontaine and all the folks who work with Jean. But this is a great way for parents to feel supported as well. So thank you for presenting and for reminding everybody that we have networks for the kids and for the parents. So thank you.
Anyone else? Bronwyn?
I was also just going to say thank you for putting in so much time for the program and for coming on this evening. And hopefully, community members and parents will see this and be more inclined to get involved and realize that the parent supporting parents motto is really essential. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's very important, obviously, for everybody to know special education laws to make sure you're advocating for your kids. So thank you both for what you guys are doing. So our next up, we have the naming of the Long Meadow High School track. We had a public hearing on January 14th. At that time, the support expressed was overwhelmingly positive for the suggestion of naming the high school track after Mr. John Devine. One thing that was a question at the time was whether or not the school committee had the right to make this decision. And it has been determined that, as we expected, we do have the right to make this decision. So it is up to the school committee to name school land and buildings. I guess, I don't know how else to put it, but it's under our purview. So yes, we could get to do that. So there's a possible motion in front of you. And then we could discuss if anybody else wants to say anything.
I'll make the motion. I move that the school committee approve the naming of the Long Meadow High School track for retired track coach and school adjustment counselor, Mr. John Devine, and direct the superintendent to develop a plan in accordance with district policies and procedures for signage and/or plaque development and placement.
Is there a second? Second. It's been seconded. Is there any discussion? One thing I'll add, but I still want to highlight other discussion is that we did not receive any feedback to the negative. So not only was it overwhelmingly positive, we did not receive anything against us. Gianna, I saw your hand.
Thanks, Ryan. And I know that many have said this at the public hearing and probably will say it again tonight. But thank you to Coach Devine and his family for just, you know, again, their service to the community and to Mary Henshaw, I think I saw her on here, for bringing this forward and to all the people who have sent emails or participated in either of the meeting or the public hearing to share your thoughts and your, you know, your just appreciation for the coach. So thank you, everybody.
Well said. Thank you. Anyone else? Kevin?
Yeah, I mean, just to echo Gianna, the whole process has been very inspirational and it's really been a joy to hear from the student athletes about their experiences with Coach Devine. So thank you to all of them for either speaking or writing. Again, it's been truly inspirational.
Bronwyn?
Thanks. Just in addition to what Gianna and Kevin said, I just want to say this is definitely one of the more exciting votes for me and I'm excited for it to happen soon. Thanks.
Anybody else? Superintendent, go ahead.
I see Mary Henshaw, the principal applicant, on the call tonight. And we thank Mary for her hard work and passion that she brought to this project. And as someone who worked with John for many years, I'm really proud that we're able to name the track after him. And Mary, I'll be in touch with you. We'll want to expedite this and do it, take it forward in a fitting and proper and dignified way. So we'll be in touch, assuming it's a positive vote.
So last I would like to add is this is not something to take lightly. Obviously, putting somebody's name on one of our facilities is a big deal, which is why it's a drawn out process and has lots of steps and gives people the opportunities to come and publicly express their opinion. And as I noted, we received only positive support for this, for the naming of the track after Coach Devine. So is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. Kevin?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me, the vote is six zero. Carrie? Great job, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Next up, we have a budget presentation. Fun's over.
I'm going to go full screen on this. And if you're unable to see it, just let me know. Well said. Okay, great. So thank you. This is a big moment annually for the district. And I was thinking to myself that it's the 12th time that I've had the pleasure and opportunity to bring a budget recommendation forward to a school committee in support of the great teaching and learning that happens. And we're proud to bring it forward. It is a reflection of, hopefully, the feedback that we received from the finance subcommittee. Appreciate their input, their guidance on it. It is a reflection of countless hours of conversation amongst our administrative team. And most especially, want to thank Tom Mazza, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, for his diligence and his expertise with a very complex budget. And, you know, each year brings different challenges. But I think bringing a recommendation forward this year was especially challenging. Each year, there are variables and there are unknowns. I think this year, the path before us, we hope it's brighter up ahead, as the picture conveys. But there are certainly some bends and twists in the road that we'll need to navigate. And in some respects, we don't know exactly what is around the bend. And so that's what we're here to, tonight, to talk about, to be sure that we are properly prepared to continue the tradition of excellence in Long Meadow Public Schools for FY22. So I want to start by acknowledging sort of the biggest variables that are becoming more known, but certainly need additional clarity. And I think the first thing that we all recognize is that we need to understand the path of this pandemic. I think there's some reason for optimism. We all know that there's, vaccines are rolling out, perhaps slower than we would want. I'm very appreciative that the town is contemplating a municipal vaccination clinic. Some of our medical providers in Long Meadow Public Schools have received their first dose. And then our K-12 staff and educators are in phase two. So we're excited for that. And yet, we also know, we really don't know fully the path of this pandemic, as Suzy, I think it was last week, and she mentioned, you know, that we need to understand the impact on children's health and understand the effect on their learning. And we also know that the vaccine is, you know, available to adults, but there is not yet a vaccine for the children. And so, you know, all these things really should have us pause and think about the types of staffing and services that we will need for the coming year. One of the positive things is that we can anticipate that there will be some federal stimulus funds available to us. You'll see that some federal stimulus funds are coming off the books. But just this morning, hot off the presses news, we found out about an application from a second round of stimulus funding that will be available to us. Talk about that shortly. Then the other big variable is really understanding what students' academic and SEL needs will be in the coming year. And we're being very mindful of that. We're being attentive to the needs that are manifesting themselves, whether they relate to children's social, emotional wellbeing or they relate to their academic needs that they might have. And so I think we'll, we will hopefully see some clarity begin to emerge. I mean, each of these, these are really big variables. And there are other budget variables always, right? Relating to staffing and utilities and state aid. Those are typical variables that we have to account for at this time of year. But these three variables are maybe larger than we're typically accustomed to. So a quick note on the federal stimulus funds that we know to be available to us. And so as a result of a relief package that was passed in late December, we know that we will be able to access what is called ESER II, the Elementary and Secondary School Relief Fund. This allocated $814 million to Massachusetts. And again, just this morning, we learned that Long Meadow Public Schools is scheduled to receive $498,960 from this round of federal stimulus funds. To be clear, this is not, these are not funds that are in hand. In fact, we don't even have the application. We're expecting the application for these funds to come out sometime in February. And we'll have to begin to discuss with the school committee about the application of this important resource. And noting importantly, that the federal stimulus funds that are projected here are available for use to us throughout all of FY22 and even into the following fiscal year. I would note that, you know, another unknown in terms of the federal stimulus funds is a relief package that is currently being considered at the federal level. The Biden administration has put forward a plan that would provide another $130 billion to K-12 schools. And so if that were distributed along the same lines as this fund, it would be a significant opportunity for us and one that is frankly needed. And that's what we really need to continue to talk about. So just want to dive a little bit deeper on this, you know, on this question of how we might potentially leverage the federal stimulus funds and any other funds that might become available to us to ensure that we are being attentive to the health and safety of students and that we are addressing critical academic and SEL needs. I think that we've talked about the value that small class size has for us. We know that in many cases, small class size is necessary for us to manage through the pandemic and to allow for the distance between the social distance, physical distance between children. We also would want to think about any targeted supports that we could provide children. And then certainly, ongoing educator professional development. We were very, I guess, pointed and strategic in the PD that we offered last summer and at the beginning of this school year. And I think it paid great dividends. And it put us on a good path in terms of the professional development that was needed to work through remote learning and hybrid learning. And then finally, even thinking through some of the digital learning tools, there are so many tools that our educators embraced and that we provided at the district level that if we are in sort of, if there are demands for remote learning next year, then we would want to make sure that we, again, have these digital learning tools available to our educators. And these are things that, like EdPuzzle or Lexia or Discovery Education, which we had been using, but we expanded the use of, and Gizmo and NearPod and so many tools that our educators learned and embraced and helped to use to support student learning. So those are some of the things that we sort of need to think about in terms of addressing and how we might respond to the needs that we're identifying. And again, to just dive a little bit deeper into this, and this is not meant to be an exhaustive list. It's not meant to be a complete list. But I wanted to give you some idea of, you know, the approach that we would want to take to make sure that we are addressing student needs in the wake of this pandemic. And I think that, you know, we want to make sure that we're going back to the standards that have guided our work. We have made great inroads on standard-based teaching and learning. And if we're able to continue to identify those priority standards and essential standards and use those as our focus next year, I think that will help us support students. We also know that coming out of this pandemic, there'll be students that are ready for additional challenge. And there are students that will have some gaps and we'll need to identify those gaps, whether they're on the SEL side or the academic side. And we'll need to make sure that we're addressing those appropriately. We've talked a lot in this district about creating learning experiences for children that are really tied to their individual identities, their learning styles, their race, their ethnicity, making sure we're being responsive to the individual backgrounds and needs of all learners. And then ensuring that we continue to support teachers. And I'll talk a little bit later about universal design for learning and how that factors into some of our planning. So again, it's not meant to be an exhaustive list, but maybe it gives you some idea of how we would want to respond to and address student needs in the coming year. So on to the recommendation. In, as educators, we often like to focus on essential questions, right? And so I think this is our essential question. And this is sort of the essential question that we talked to the finance subcommittee about. Is at this juncture in time, do we develop a budget that is more reflective of the budget that you voted this time last year through pandemic? Or do we move forward with a budget that is more reflective of the sort of the pandemic response that we have put together over the last nine months? And with many, so I had the foresight to commit to the additional FTEs that we needed to achieve the small class size and to support remote learners. And we've done a lot of reassignment with staff. Specialist teachers and coaches have served as classroom teachers and done so very, very well. So that really is the kind of the essential question right now. So here's the recommendation. The recommendation that you'll see tonight is to move forward with a budget that is reflective of the voted FY21 budget, the first bullet. With the caveat, and I can't stress this enough, that we would want to be in a position to, if the, you know, depending on the path of this pandemic and depending on what we collectively decide students will need, we'll need to, we may need to develop staffing plans and service plans that are similar to what we have in place right now with additional FTEs, with great small class sizes, or making sure that we have the supplies in place and the PD in place to respond to the pandemic if it lingers. And I think there's, you know, I haven't heard any expert that said that this will be completely in the rearview mirror in the fall. So I think we, I think we, you know, I want to stress that caveat that, you know, working with town officials and working with the finance subcommittee and working with the committee as a whole, we want to make sure that we're in a position to perhaps seek additional appropriations or identify ways we can reallocate the voted budget or leverage additional federal stimulus funds to respond to student learning needs or any pandemic challenges that are lingering. So I think that's the, that's the critical question. And so as I proceed, I'll, you know, we're bringing forward a recommendation that is more similar to your voted FY21 budget. Again, with the caveat that we certainly need to continue to monitor and continue to understand what our needs are going to be. So the budget recommendation tonight, I'll talk sort of conceptually first and then we'll get into the nuts and bolts of it, is a commitment, obviously, to the student health and safety that always has been and needs to be, needs to continue to be our primary focus, our top priority. You'll see in the slides that we obviously have to project for contractual obligations. We're very fortunate to have great staff and we have obligations to them that are negotiated. And we always want to make sure we attract and retain the best teachers for our students in Long Meadow. The other thing I hope you see is that this budget commits us to that continuum of services for regular education and special education students. Obviously, I think it's critical that we, you know, work in a cost-effective and sustainable manner, recognizing the challenges that the town is facing or, you know, in terms of the tax ceiling. These are very real fiscal forces that we need to be mindful of. And then, as always, developing a budget that is responsive to shifting enrollment patterns and optimal class size. I think one of, you know, one of the things I understand and really came to understand about Long Meadow is the premium that we place on class size and how that can work to help effectively support students. So to continue again, so what are some of the commitments here? The commitment to the tiered systems and supports, the continuum of supports that I'll talk a little bit about briefly. The, we expect in March that the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity will deliver a set of recommendations for how we can be more inclusive and equitable in our practice. And so people will want to be sure that we are responsive to that study, to the equity on it that we've been engaged in. The, from the, from the school committee on down, we have some very specific goals related to anti-racism and ensuring that our teachers are responsive to backgrounds of students and that our students are mindful of this as well. And then finally, in terms of the supports from teaching and learning, one of the things that we've heard from the committee is to be sure that we have dedicated funding for curriculum renewal and adoption. And so this budget will reflect that. I think in the coming year, the priority areas that we'll study include elementary social studies and elementary math. Universal screening is, continues to be and is more important now than ever to understand children's readiness and to understand where they are as learners. You'll see a continued investment in career education. I'm super excited that beginning this year, we will have, we will really formally launch the career education programming. In the, in the, you'll recall that this time last year, the committee voted to support the career education position. But we rolled it back to halftime this year because it became less practical to have that as a four-year, four-year position. So it became a half-year position. And next year, we'll want to move that, transition that into a four-year position. And then next year, again, continuing that focus on multi-tiered systems of support and universal design for learning. And I'm just going to sort of beg your indulgence here for a minute just to talk a little bit about NTSS and UDL and how they really, you know, will hopefully put us on a path to support students. February of 2020, our almost entire administrative team attended a DESI training, multi-day training on NTSS. And I've been to many trainings over the years with administrative teams. And sometimes you come out of these trainings uninspired and not so motivated. And sometimes you come out very motivated. out very motivated and inspired. I can tell you that we came out of this training, uh, very motivated, very inspired, and we, we began to see MTSS as, as a really powerful unifying framework, something that really, um, uh, would, would create a path and a coherent strategy for us, uh, in terms of providing that continuum of supports. And there's two key components along the, that kind of wrap around the tiered supports here, and one is the universal design for learning and, and the other is, uh, the equitable access. We've been talking, um, for a while now about equitable access and what does that mean? And it, it means being responsive to children's individual identities. It means ensuring that children have the technology access they need. It means, uh, ensuring that we are being responsive to the backgrounds and identities of individual students. And so equitable access is something that, that we continue to be very interested in and, and want to make sure that, that we are providing for our students. And then I want to touch on the, the UDL component of this. So you've heard me talk for some time about how we, um, are interested in thinking differently about student success and ensuring that students have authentic, real-world opportunities to learn. And that's, that conversation has been propelled forward by our interest in SEL, division of the graduate, um, standard-based grading, um, career education, excuse me, and I think those things kind of tie in perfectly with this notion of universal design for learning and ensuring that in the way we design lessons and units of instruction, that there are multiple means of engagement. So what does that mean? That, you know, really referring to, excuse me, um, ensuring that kids see their work as relevant, uh, ensuring that kids see their work as interesting, uh, ensuring that kids feel motivated and that they have some choice. So that's multiple means of engagement. Multiple means of expression, the idea that ensuring that as we design lessons and units of study, that there are opportunities for students to demonstrate their learning in a variety of ways, whether they're creating or constructing or using a variety of assessments. So that's another sort of component that I think ties in nicely with the things that have been propelling us forward, the DOG, SEL, career education, et cetera, et cetera. And then finally, that, the multiple means of representation that, you know, that we are, as educators, we're presenting information to students in a variety of ways. So we see this whole MTSS framework as something that provides some coherent structure for us and will provide, uh, a, a basis for the types of professional development that we're engaging staff with, uh, the goals, the planning, our work administrative. And so I look forward to talking to the committee more about this, but the reason I bring it up now is really just to emphasize that, that really this does become part of, you know, the way we allocate resources and spend our time and, uh, arrange professional development. So now, sort of back to the commitments, and then we'll get the nuts and bolts of the budget. Um, this budget, it also commits us to the one-to-one device deployment. Uh, we've seen great benefits of that this year. The, the pandemic accelerated our interest in that. It accelerated our rollout and implementation of one-to-one practices. One of the good side effects of this challenge that we've been through, uh, the Google Education platform, uh, it, it will require an upgrade, and Nick George is guiding us through that, and that will be part of the, um, allocations that we provide next year, make next year. Nick George, thank you for, uh, investigating opportunities to ensure that we've got backup internet connections. And Nick has, um, through a reallocation strategy, he has identified ways to ensure that we have uninterrupted access. And, uh, generally, we've, we've been very fortunate during this pandemic to have regular uninterrupted services, at least from the, from the school end. And then finally, um, tech integration, this budget commits us to, um, electronic res, right, excuse me, electronic registration and forms. So through the portal, um, we will be able to send out and collect, uh, registration forms and, uh, information from families that will make sure it'll, it'll, um, help us with purify data and, uh, make sure that we are partnering with families in ways that make sense for them. I know, as a parent, I always dreaded having the eight pages of forms, documentations that I had to fill out at the beginning of the year. So this will streamline that process and hopefully be a good tool for our families. So now to the, uh, sort of the, the nuts and bolts of this, um, recommendation, I'm going to start on the top right here, uh, the contractual obligations. Um, we have to reject the obligation that we will have to our staff. And so, um, right, you know, so right off the top, we, we have to account for that, and, um, we have accounted for that with a $903,000 increase in the budget. The other major, um, increase that we should acknowledge is, uh, out-of-district tuitions and, uh, to be sure that we are, are serving, um, students with intensive special needs appropriately. And so I'll come back to the previous spreadsheet momentarily, but as we talk about out-of-district tuitions, this is a slide that we reviewed with the finance subcommittee, and I think it tells a couple stories. It tells us that we have been successful in creating inclusive programming in this district for students to learn in their hometown, at their neighborhood school. And yet, it also tells us that we have some challenges for FY22 that we need to account for, that we want to, again, make sure that students are getting the services they need and are entitled to. And so this is something that, um, thanks to Jean Fontaine for her careful, uh, attention to this and being sure that we're in a position with the FY22 budget to serve the students that are represented in the chart that you see here. So to go back, um, oh, rather than going through every item, we certainly can come back if you have any, any particular questions. You'll see on the, on the left-hand side, the reductions, we do have a significant, um, attrition number. Mr. Mazza can help us understand that number more if you need details, but essentially, this is staff that have been declassified or are planning to retire, and perhaps they're at the higher end of the pay scale, and generally newer educators come in lower on the pay scale. And so this would be, um, you know, we're obviously, uh, sad to see that number go up in the sense that a lot of experienced, great educators will be retiring, but on the other hand, it provides us with an opportunity for the budget. Some of the federal stimulus money will be falling off. As I mentioned earlier, there'll be money that will be coming back on. The Blueberry Hill position on the left side, we will have more sections graduating Blueberry Hill than we're projecting to come in as little kindergarters. And so that's the reduction there. At Williams Middle School, you'll, you'll see a sort of a tie-in between the left and right side of this chart. We have the, we call it the bubble class, going from seventh grade to eighth grade at Williams. And so rather than the typical five sections at the middle school grade levels, at eighth grade next year at Williams, we would plan for six sections so as to kind of honor that commitment to class size. I should note that our principals are on the call tonight, and so if there are any particular questions that you have, they're available for you as well. And on the right-hand side, I'll highlight a couple more items, and we can come back to anything that is of interest or that you have questions about. You'll see a, an entry to address substitute, um, salaries. This seems to be something that, uh, it, it needs some correction to ensure that we are, again, attracting and retaining substitutes. They're, they're a valuable part of, uh, the work that we do and valuable part of our staff, and we want to make sure that they're, uh, compensated properly and compensated in a way that ensures that we have a viable pool of qualified substitutes. You'll also see on the right-hand side, the, uh, the line item for, uh, curriculum and textbook adoption. Uh, the committee has asked us to ensure that we have a dedicated funding line for curriculum textbooks and adoptions to ensure that the, the planning, excuse me, happens on the front end, uh, in terms of budgeting and in terms of the curriculum that is written to support those adoptions. And again, we certainly can come back to this slide. It usually generates some questions. At the highest level, this provides you with, uh, an explanation of the, uh, request to the general fund. I, I think this is probably the slide that would be of most interest to our partners on the town side. You'll see that it, it, it would require a general fund revenue increase of $840,000. Uh, and yet, the special revenue, that I can explain what we mean by special revenue shortly, but these are generally federal and state grants. You'll see that we are projecting a decrease there. So the net increase of the budget overall is a modest $256,000, but the general fund request is, I can give you, give you a little historical comparison here. You'll see that the, the general fund increase that would be required to support this recommendation is $840,000. It's the highest in, in recent memory. You'd have to go back to FY17 to find a, uh, a greater increase. And yet, the total budget, when all funds are factored in, is simply an increase of 0.66%. The, again, this is looking at the same numbers essentially in a different way. It shows you the breakout in terms of the special revenue, BACCO grant, the application of school choice funds, regular and special education grants and, and other special revenues. And you'll see at the bottom, the COVID grants that were part of FY21 and have been zeroed out for FY22. But again, we're anticipating, uh, the influx of some additional federal stimulus money, uh, in the weeks and months ahead. Because last year, the committee asked us to be sure that we had, um, given you information on FTE status. Uh, you'll see that the proposal would have us at the same FTE level compared to FY21. It doesn't mean that, uh, everybody that was with us in 21 will be back with us in 22, but it nets out in a way that is, is equal. I know that, uh, enrollment and class size is, uh, important for the committee to understand. And take a, a quick look at this. This is, uh, in your meeting packet. You'll see that, uh, you know, there's some variability in there, uh, and, uh, you'll also see that our lower elementary cohorts are, tend to be smaller. This is, Dr. Gant has gave me the, the numbers that we currently have for kindergarten for next year. And so currently, we have 145 students registered, uh, at kindergarten. And so that's, uh, we expect that number to grow. Uh, it may exceed the size of the current kindergarten. I'd say it's likely, but certainly not to the level that, you know, we see in first grade or second grade. And we can come back to this. You have questions? You'll see in 2021, we had 22 classroom sections at Blueberry. This budget would recommend, uh, 21 sections at Blueberry, and you'll see the resulting, uh, estimated class size on the right. Center School, again, uh, the estimated number of sections. Mr. Mazza, I think that the total there, we, we should, the total number of sections at center, is that, uh, should that be 22 at the bottom there? I'm just...
No, we think right now...
Oh, I got you. It's because of the, the section that we added mid-year. Thank you. I'm sorry. So you'll see it, um, on the, on the watch list, sort of. We, we always, each year, we have classrooms that are grade levels that are on a watch list. At that first grade, at, at Center School, we know that there are, uh, a number of families that whose intentions are unknown to us at this point. So that, that number of sections at Center School, that might be something that we'll have to account for if we see registrations grow at that grade level. So it's really kind of on the watch list and something that we, we want to be attentive to. Tom noted that in third grade, after the budget was decided, but not in response to the pandemic, we did add a section at, at third grade last year. Then finally, Wolf Swamp, again, probably on the watch list, ought to be that third grade. Uh, we have 21 or 22 students, uh, in each section, and that could be something that we'll, we'll need to be attentive to going forward as well. At the middle school, um, I want to, these are averages, and I want to sort of be upfront that the averages, um, at each grade level at each school, there are only five sections. And so once you get into seventh grade and eighth grade and, and students have choices in mathematics, um, it's, it's impossible to balance the sections precisely. And so the, the 21 number that you see there at Williams at grade eight, it could range depending on the number of students that are in, uh, the algebra classes versus, um, uh, the non-algebra classes. And then same thing at Glenn Brook as well. Last thing I want to note is, this comes later on in our agenda. I want to highlight, I should have it highlighted. This is FY21. I just want to note that down below in your agenda is, um, a, a set of recommendations relating to, uh, end-of-year investments that we will be in a position to recommend to you, uh, relating to computer hardware, middle school facility assessment, textbook replacement, benchmark assessments and security equipment. These are all things that we'll talk to, to the, uh, the finance subcommittee, discuss all these. They come up later on in your agenda, but I just wanted to mention it here, um, you know, because really, you know, our expenditures or, or investments are sort of on a continuum, and we're in a position to, um, make some investments at the end of this year, at the end of this fiscal year, that obviously would affect our planning for FY22. So I'll start with sort of where we, where we began, that, that critical question, that essential question, is it, is it a, a level of service and staffing that is reflective of the voted FY21 budget or a level of staffing that kind of is more reflective of the, of the pandemic? Knowing that the committee added several FTEs, uh, 13 FTEs beyond the voted budget to help us navigate through this, through this pandemic. And then finally, now stop, um, I've been too long-winded. The, uh, next steps in the budget process, um, a public hearing, uh, by the school committee on the budget recommendation. February 9th is the tentative date we have set aside at the committee meeting to vote on the, on the budget. We need to establish a, a time to, um, present the budget to the select board. That's, that's typically part of our practice. And then the select board would be voting on the town budget in March and then May eleventh, annual town meeting. So that is it. I appreciate your patience and attention. And like I said, we're really proud to bring this forward. And thank you, Mr. Maz. Thanks to the principals for joining us. Thank you, Sue, for your helping us develop a coherent approach to responding to student learning and the needs that they will have most likely in the wake of this pandemic. So I'll stop there. And if you have questions or ideas or comments, we're happy to answer. I just would say, again, knowing that this is the beginning of the process, budgets evolve and take shape over many, many months. Frankly, you could vote a budget on February ninth only to have to seek additional appropriations or reallocate in ways that respond to the needs that emerge for the pandemic as we understand it going forward. All right. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Superintendent. Members, any questions? Sure, there's plenty. Who wants to go first? And I can't see you all, so you're gonna have to unmute yourself and let me know.
Ryan, I can go first.
Go ahead, Jamie.
I don't, I don't have any questions. All I have to say is, thank you both Marty and Tom and all the admin, whoever worked on it. I think it's fantastic budget. I think it's laid out very well. It not only hits, from a numbers standpoint, what makes sense for both the schools and for the towns, but from what we're trying to accomplish. We're not going to know all the answers with regards to the pandemic. You know, if that changes, like what Marty said at the end of it, we'll adapt. But going back to the baseline, FY twenty-twenty-one makes just tons of sense to me. I think you did a fantastic job as a group. So I truly like what you presented, and I like how it ties into everything we're trying to accomplish with what we know today. So, nice work.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Ryan, it's Gianna. I'll go if nobody else is ready.
Go ahead, Gianna.
So also, I just wanted to say thank you to Superintendent and Tom and everybody in the administration who worked. I know this is a huge task. Two quick questions, just because my brain and numbers. Superintendent, the middle school average class size for grade eight, the twenty-one to twenty-two students, and I know you were explaining we can't like pinpoint it exactly because of the different, but twenty, twenty-one and a half, you know, that seems high to me. Is that, am I just misunderstanding that?
No, I don't think so. And in fact, you know, really, it should be noted that that twenty-one is the average, and we would likely see several sections above that depending on the number of students that are taking the eight-point-one math versus the eight-point-two math. So we might see a, we might see a range there that's tied into that average. So there'll be some that are probably mid twenties, twenty-three, twenty-four even.
Okay. And so that, so because they're kind of like the specialized courses that you're talking about, that's not a situation where we would like create another eighth-grade section to lower the class size?
So I asked that question of one of our middle principals today. I said, so if we were to sort of inject another section into the mix and had just like, let's say, a point-two math teacher, what would that do to the overall schedule? It would throw off. And one of our middle principals, I'm sure, can explain this better than I, but it would create some challenges in terms of the way the rest of the building is scheduled. And if that's something that you'd like some additional explanation on, I'm sure Nicole or Beth would be happy to jump in. Is that something, would you like Nicole or Beth to shed a little more light on that?
I mean, I think, you know, y'all are the experts on that. If they want to, certainly. But, you know, I don't, you know, I think you explained it and, you know, in terms of either creating another section or not, and it doesn't seem like the best course for those.
Well, not being presumptuous, I don't know, Nicole or Beth, I mean, if there's anything that you'd add or...
Yeah. So I would just, hi, everyone. So I would just say that that number is actually not that high, Gianna. We've had them in the past in my time there. We've had the algebra classes and even the seven-ones hit twenty-seven kids, twenty-eight. I mean, those, that, that, those numbers are pretty high, but these numbers are pretty reasonable. So I think the highest that we have is twenty-four at Glenbrook for our high math classes. So, and that's pretty, it's, yeah, I mean, of course, anybody would want them to be lower. I mean, it's easier when they're lower, but twenty-four is manageable. And that's as much as we can have in the science labs, too. So we can't go over twenty-four in a science lab because we just can't fit them in the labs. So twenty-four is the highest class right now that we have next year. So that seems to be pretty reasonable.
Yeah. Thanks for that, Nicole. You know, because again, I'm used to elementary and like, you know, I know the high numbers that we have, so.
Yeah.
We're saying that.
Yeah. The foreign language numbers, we like to see lower because it's just harder when you're learning a language, right? You'd have, it's better to have lower enrollment in those classes. But twenty-four is, you know, if, you know, say we're back to normal, that feels, you know, it is higher, but it's definitely manageable.
Okay. Thanks, Nicole. And Superintendent, I just have another question about a different subject, if that's okay?
Yep.
The out-of-district, you know, like the pattern.
Yep.
And again, forgive me if I'm not understanding this, but down at the bottom where it says total, you know, from year to year, it's like nicely going down. And then twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one, it pops back up again. So I just didn't know if there's a reason for that or if we know.
Yeah, I think Jean is with us, and I think it would be helpful to hear from her on that.
Yeah. So I'm happy to speak to that. So that trend, if you look from two thousand fourteen, we had, that was actually, we were still trending up. So two thousand fifteen, we had fifty-six students that were outplaced in either day or residential placements. And if you look at two thousand fifteen, that year, we had seventeen students residentially placed. And then over the next three or four years, we actually reduced that number. And there were a few factors in all of that. That is when we started really building and expanding our in-district programming. And also, at the eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-old level, we started really programming differently for those students so that they didn't require residential placements. So that's when we started partnerships with Holyoke Community and Westfield State and also adult services to be able to meet the needs of those students while they could remain home and get them job skills and out in the workforce. So what we're seeing is, if you look at the October one count for twenty-twenty, and that was just this past fall, really, our numbers were almost identical to the year before. Actually, we were still reducing, it looked like, a little bit. But it's important to note that October one of this year, we had barely started school. So our students didn't return to the elementary campus till, I believe it was September, maybe twentieth and around there, and the high school not until October fifth. So really, that beginning-of-year juggling of where kids return and they are not in the same place that they were the year before. What we have seen as a result of the pandemic has been students with autism and students with underlying mental health issues have been really significantly impacted. And as a result, students in those populations are requiring a higher level of care. So within our placements, you're seeing students who, maybe last year, we could manage their needs in district, now need maybe a collaborative program. And then students who needed a collaborative program maybe need a more specialized day program. And then we have a small cohort of students who, whose needs need to be met through residential placement. So we are seeing an uptick, and that is a prediction that June of twenty-twenty-one, that is just kind of what we know right now and what we're kind of anticipating through the end of this year so that we can budget appropriately for next year. But I appreciate, Gianna, that you noticed that downtrending because when you look at the financial implications during that time period, it was a significant savings every year. And unfortunately, you know, due to the pandemic, that was not able to happen this year.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Jean. That makes total sense. And I'm glad that you pointed out the residential and the private day, because I, you know, I can only assume that those are more intensive. So those continued to trend down, which is nice because, you know, it seems to me that, you know, the more services you're getting on, you know, within the schools, you know, it's just, it's good to see that those more intensive services are going down.
Well, yeah, they're just, they're upticking a little bit right now. And I think that that's a common trend that I think other districts are also dealing with right now, that there are, you know, there's a small group of students who are really struggling. And they're, you know, when that happens, you need a higher level of care. When you're in a higher level of care, the student-to-staff ratio is reduced. And that's where the price, it obviously goes up. The tuition increases as the ratio of staff to students decreases.
Yeah. Thank you, Jean.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Ryan, this is Kevin. Do you mind, Suzy, do you mind if I just follow up on this slide?
Go ahead, Kevin.
So I just want to make sure I understand this. And part of it might be that I feel like I'm in a bit of a sauna, and I don't think my brain is working well, and I'm recognizing what the high school students are saying about like, when you start the day out, it's wicked hot, and it's really hard to concentrate. And I feel like that's where I'm at. But anyway, bear with me. So I want to make sure I understand what's going on in the slide. So I think this number, which I hope you can see my annotation, goes here. Is that right?
Kevin, if I can jump in, the number you circled is what we have budgeted for FY twenty-one. We don't know what our final expenditure will be, which is what that trend line across the bottom for the cost reflects. So we don't know if we're going to expend the full two-point-two million that we have budgeted this year. I think it'll depend on how many students actually end up in the placements that are projected in that last column. I know Jean has been dealing with a number of different challenges in terms of getting students placed into specific programs. So whether or not we hit that two-point-two number there or not is TBD.
Okay. But that's our best estimate for what's going to end up in that spot right now. And I guess, and again, I don't know if I'm just repeating what Gianna said, but like, I'm a little bit surprised when I compare this number to that number.
Sorry.
Oh, all right. You know, it's more than a hundred percent increase over two years. Like, that's just shocking to me. And I guess I just really don't understand how we were trending down over like six years, and now we're back to where we were. Like, again, I don't really understand that. And Jean, I think what you said is it's all pandemic-related, which, again, I guess, I'm not understanding this. And if you could maybe explain it again, maybe I would be able to understand it.
Okay. So we're not anywhere near back to where we started. So to end this year with thirty-four placements is not near, you know, fifty-two.
But Jean, I mean, just to stop you there, like, three million to two-point-eight million, I mean, that's pretty much the same number, right? Like, that's what I...
But over those seven years, every tuition has gone up. So even if the placement stayed exactly the same in two thousand fourteen, if it was the same fifty-two placements in those same spots, that number would go up significantly.
Well, and I get that. But again, like, if we compare those two numbers, right, one-point-three to two-point-eight, like I said, I mean, I did the math, right? That's a hundred-and-twelve percent increase over two years, right? I mean, that's shocking to me. And again, like, am I wrong? Right? That's a hundred-and-twelve percent increase over two years.
I think one of the things to look at, too, if you disaggregate the students that need placement and look at the trend in each row, and it'll give you some idea of the variability here. Certainly, it is, you know, it is something that can be highly variable from year to year.
And I just want to, I want to add a little bit more detail, too. This is not all pandemic-related. So behind every number, you know, is a student, is a story. And some of that October movement that I was talking about are also move-ins. So just off the top of my head, without looking through all of this, you know, we had two students that moved in from out-of-states with IEPs for out-of-district placements. Like, we don't, there's not much you can do about that. Those kids have to get placed. They weren't not in this year's budget. And that, you know, that happens from time to time. You know, I really can't speak to the two numbers at the bottom of this slide because those are Tom's. I'm not sure if he can add a little bit more detail on that or not. You know, and I think, too, it's important to note, the prices for residential placements have significantly increased over the years. So a residential placement for one student can range anywhere from a hundred and fifty thousand to over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for one student. So, you know, and even day placements over the last year, some of our day placements for students with significant needs are, you know, range in the one hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for one student. Which is why we, you know, really, it is not something we take lightly. We try to re-exhaust all in-district programming prior to looking to outplace. But when there are safety concerns, there is not a lot of discussion. So I just, another note about just kind of mental health issues right now. I think we've seen the highest number of students.
You're muted, Jean. There you go. We heard you say the highest number of students.
We've had a lot of students who have had to access either partial hospitalization or full hospitalization for mental health issues this year. I think we've seen an increase in families who have had to...
Cut out of the word, Jean.
So I don't know what else to say about that.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's helpful, Jean. And I think Tom wants to say more. But Jean, that's definitely helpful, giving us an idea of what those things actually cost. So thank you for that.
Yeah, that was gonna be my point, Kevin. I mean, when you look at those three residential placements, they probably contribute some, you know, seventy percent of that increase. So unfortunately, although I agree your hundred-and-twelve percent is accurate, Jean and I go through an exhaustive process of looking at each student and the placement they're at, at the school they're at, and what that cost would be. So it's our best guess. It's fluid. That number may go up in terms of the number of students that are actually in a placement next year. I mean, that's what we know of right now. But every year, what you approve in this budget and what we end up actually utilizing during the course of the fiscal year, it can vary greatly. We've been fortunate, the last few years, it's contributed to the money that we've had to turn back at the end of the year because of the success of our investments in prior years. I just, I think what we're starting to see now are some of the needs that we can't support with in-district programming any longer. And so we're addressing them, you know, through these, through the placements you see on that slide.
Tom, could you?
All of that is super helpful. Thank you to both of you.
Tom, I was gonna say, could you maybe just comment on the relationship between this and Circuit Breaker? And now, some of the costs are offset by the Circuit Breaker revenue that we received?
Yeah. So there are, I think, seven line items within the budget that make up that two-point-eight million. So there's three sources of funds. We have the general fund that contributes, the IDA grant, and Circuit Breaker. So Circuit Breaker is funds we receive from... So Circuit Breaker is funds we receive from the state for uh special ed costs that we incur uh on a student basis that exceeds a certain threshold. So it's about forty six thousand. Once uh once you hit that threshold for services related to a student and the services that they're receiving, the state will reimburse us. And I believe in FY twenty one, uh it's expected at seventy five percent uh of those expenses incurred above that. So um as we spend more, we do increase the amount of state um Circuit Breaker funds we we receive. And I do think, you know, in FY twenty two, you are seeing a a substantial increase in the amount we're expecting to get back to offset those increased costs. So that increase isn't totally being um borne by the general fund. We are, we are, some of the Circuit Breaker revenue um is gonna also offset that increase of six hundred and twenty five thousand that we're expecting.
Right, that that's especially helpful. Thank you, Tom.
Anybody with another question?
Yes, I have a question. Okay, I have I have a few. I'm gonna kind of go um big and then maybe a little um more granular. Trying to get, not to get too granular, but um when we think about the FTE levels pre-pandemic, during the pandemic and and continued pandemic with what I call mitigation, which would include a vaccine for adults at this point only. You know, one of the things I question related to Marty's original um essential question is, you know, do we include um all of the additional staff that we've um we've decided to allocate this year in the budget going forward? Or do we go back to the pre-pandemic um projections? And then, you know, hopefully not need that staff. But also, um if we do have, you know, a good working partnership with the town um to do that. You know, my questions related to that are are twofold. First, um, you know, I I appreciate the role that our specialists, especially at the um elementary level, which I I I see more directly, um have played in terms of, you know, taking on uh classes this year. I certainly um appreciate all of all of that. Would we look to reinstate them um, you know, initially? And then look at look at those groups sort of as a as the first place to add back in, should we need levels that are lower than the enrollments in the sections that you presented to us? I'm also wondering about retaining qualified staff that we've been able to, in some cases, hire this year. You know, knowing that we were not, we're still not able to, you know, fully bring back fourth and fifth grade uh because of staffing of of, you know, the pool being relatively tapped at this point. And or or are we thinking, you know, we'll, we may have some better options? And potentially, related to one of our goals, more diverse options um for staffing, should we find the need to repost the positions? And I just wanted some uh thinking to be shared on the on the part of the administration about, you know, how we handle all of those, you know, those questions and those situations.
I think you framed framed it really well. And I think that's that's something that that we're um trying to go heads our heads around as well. And and part of the reason that we feel like we want to um see how this pandemic is playing out and see, you know, what the specific needs of of students are. And then, Suzie, when you said um, you you talked about reinstating the um the specialists and the coaches, did you mean reinstate them to their?
Previous, their pre-pandemic positions, yeah.
I I think, um, so I I'd say that, you know, we we see the value of having that infrastructure in place to provide uh interventions for students. You know, we we want to make sure that that uh students are getting that high quality tier one instruction, but also that they're having opportunities for targeted intervention when needed. And so, you know, we would, I would be, I think we have to think about um, you know, making sure that, you know, students only recourse perhaps is not a, you know, uh an IEP. That we want to make sure that kids feel supported and families feel supported and that we have some specialists or interventionists in place. But, yeah, I think I I'd welcome, you know, conversation from the committee on that as well. To kind of get some sense of, you know, which direction you think we ought to be planning towards. But, you know, and then in terms of retaining staff, you you said something very important that I think we we have been so fortunate to hire some wonderful teachers um this year in the middle of the year. And um we we oft sometimes question whether or not we would be able to. And so if we're, you know, if we're in a position to retain uh some of these great people that we hired, either because we're adding additional appropriations to the budget or there's a a place for them um somewhere in a in, you know, in the staffing picture. You know, people retire, people go on leaves uh for various reasons, you know. It's it's great that we have this sort of uh, you know, built-in pool of applicants. And I think we we do recognize that the smaller class size has been a a key mitigation strategy for us. Maybe the most important mitigation strategy for us. And obviously, it's helped us provide more in-person learning for kids. So I hope that hits on some of the things you were asking about. And and and, you know, I'd welcome anybody else that wants to jump in from the admin team. Or, you know, I I'm interested in the sort of the the direction and ideas of the committee on this as well.
Yeah, no, I I I appreciate um your response. I don't, you know, I don't expect us to have a crystal ball and an answer about what exactly is going to happen. But I I think an honest and open conversation about what what we lose with both options, what we gain and what we lose, you know, is really critical to just, you know, kind of have on the table so that we make the best decision when we do go to vote um on on your budget proposal. And and I think we just have to be eyes wide open about all of the implications of of either scenario. Brian, I have another question. I have like a bunch, so, but I'll 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 stop it, too.
Go ahead.
So, you know, Marty, you you added some slides in um that were very helpful in terms of really shaping the overall, you know, sort of where does this fit in the larger scheme of of where we're headed in um in Long Meadow Public Schools related to the district improvement plan as well and district goals as well as school committee goals. And um one in particular that I just wanted to get a little bit of clarification on is where are the explicit budgetary commitments to active anti-racism um approaches, particularly with respect to curriculum, professional development, any sort of policy development and teacher or staff recruitment?
Yeah. So I I think uh in the in the PV, so you wouldn't see a a specific um line item, but inside of the 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 PV line that, and Sue can speak to this more. We would, we've been really happy with the Better Lesson Coaching that has gone on. So we see that as as something that we want to continue with. And then I think we, the PV commitment that we would make coming out of the, you know, in response to the the CLEED recommendations uh as well. And so is there anything else that that you would want to add in there or?
Um, yes, I think, um, Suzie, we have several grants that have a PV or consulting lines in them that we had planned to allocate a decent amount of those towards um addressing some of the recommendations of the CLEED Equity Audit and the anti-racist. You know, maybe building a a different website, hiring and recruiting. Potentially some more coaching from Better Lesson, like Marty said, some student programs and things like that. So um looking at just kind of reallocating funds within the budget that's here in this office for that kind of stuff.
So what what specific um grants would we leverage to?
Title four, title four to A, potentially some of title one and Metco. For starters, and I'm not sure what we'll get, you know, if we get the more funding from the the federal government, I wouldn't be opposed to stealing some of that either. But uh, you know, we'll have to see what the what it comes in and what it comes in for. So the the Better Lesson um modules or training um really are embedded in and with an anti-racism lens? Yes, these coaching sessions are specifically um regarding anti-racist teaching in classrooms. So um a teacher would meet with the coach and say, I have this class coming up. I want to try a strategy, uh and work it out with the coach. It's a typical coaching session, Suzie. I know you know what I'm talking about. But then run the session, come back to the coach, what went well, what didn't, what do we try next time? So getting a lot of really great feedback about that. I actually have my first coaching session tomorrow, kind of on a district level, so I'm pretty excited about that. That's great. When we talk about um teacher and staff recruitment, I would assume at this point we have a sense of maybe so, I I don't, I I don't know where we are in terms of, you know, teachers who are retiring or what we know in terms of attrition that will take place that might leave some open positions for next year. But have we thought about what funding we'll use to um really enhance the um hiring experience so that we can attract um, you know, a diverse um groups of of educators, hopefully to come to Long Meadow to teach our students?
So when I had a recently had an opportunity to uh meet with a a resident and parent in Long Meadow, who has some experience um working for some educational uh nonprofits and charter schools around uh recruitment and had some strategies that um we're very interested in implementing. A lot of it relates to how we present ourselves, you know, the public face, you know, via the via the website, via the advertisements. So that's something we're working on right now. In fact, I I'm uh holding back on uh posting the the Wolf's Lawn principal position until that we have that sort of public face better better defined. He also, uh, the individual also talked to us about um social media and leveraging social media to uh get our message out there. And so, you know, we've got some work to do. And Tom Lander's on the call. Tom, I I hate to put you on the spot. I know you mentioned to me today some ideas that um you've had with your administrative team, um including Mr. Dunkerly. Is that, is that something you, and I again, I hate to point you on the spot on that. If that's something you want to come back to us with some information, that's okay, too, but.
No, I can, we uh happy to tell you what we what we are doing. We we've developed relationships with area colleges for years, but we are doing it this year with a lens of specifically trying to uh with um schools of education to look for candidates of color, both in terms of hiring and in terms of student teaching. The 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 so much um research on this topic shows that you have to do more than just advertise the position. You have to, you have to plant seeds that are going to going to show some some fruit in years to come. So um Mr. Dunkerly has done really good work in terms of outreach with Springfield College in particular. In addition to uh posting on School Spring, which is which is great, which is a district requirement and which goes nationally and has a lot of advantages. We have to get that. We have to be more aggressive in pushing that message out. So um depart- Departments of Education or Schools of Education, I'm sorry, have agreed to post those to help to to help us to recruit. And uh it's something that we have to pound the pavement and make calls. And I I think it's done in conjunction with other things that the district is doing, like you talked about, Marty, in terms of marketing ourselves as a place that that is open and welcoming. But but we are actively forming those. I shouldn't say we're forming those because they're foreign, but we're actively engaging those um those departments um to try to form those relationships and and encourage student teachers to come to Long Meadow. And hopefully that will turn into hires and also get the School Spring messages out on message boards within um Schools of Education.
I'd like to ask a follow-up on the same topic, and I appreciate Suzie bringing this up because it's it's one of our goals as a school committee. It's to support inclusive anti-racist practice, culture and climate. So I guess I have I have a couple first. Well, with the colleges is is cool and all, but we're gonna have a principal opening and we're not taking a principal from a college. So is there being time and money spent on finding active prin-? We don't, we don't often hire rookies. So if we're looking for people who are currently working, how are we doing that? Like, who are you calling? How is that? Because you can't call Springfield HR department and say we would buy some of your best teachers, direct us to them. So how is it happening? I mean, just what are the specifics of the recruitment advice? And how is it going to this? How's it gonna work? And then secondly, considering the low amount of diversity we have, the few people of color in this district, what support and mentorship might we provide for these for these prospective candidates? If you're gonna convince someone to come here and be the person of color in one of our schools, that's pretty daunting. And I think they would like to know, how are you gonna help me? When or if something bad happens? Like, what kind of support am I gonna get to be successful? Um, I think that's important. So, you know, specifically, how are we getting people such as the principal? Like, what are we doing? And secondly, what type of support mentorship might we be able to provide people of color to come here, to convince them that it is worthwhile? So those are the things I think we should be advertising. And I'm wondering if that has been thought of and addressed and specifically how?
Yeah, I think the second part of your question, we we need some time on. I think it's, I think those are two great questions. I think recognizing that it's about recruiting uh and attracting candidates of color, but it's also about supporting candidates as well. So and and so that's something that um, you know, I think we we need to do some additional thinking on. In terms of the uh the recruitment strategy, again, I'd go back to the um the social media, leveraging social media, leveraging how we present ourselves. And then frankly, a lot of good old-fashioned networking uh through through uh area administrative networks and through um pushing the uh posting out to our staff. One of the, one of the suggestions that the gentleman we met with said, you know, just uh rely on your staff to get the word out, too. And and, you know, because if if two people tell two people who tell two people and on and on and on, you know, it has a, it has a greater effect. And so we want to, we want to make sure we're casting that that really wide, that definitely open to suggestions on, you know, the the and and would want to roll up my sleeves and do some work on the types of mentorship that we would want to have in place for um candidates of color and and applicants of color.
Thank you. And and on the same topic, um, I know, Brown, when you have a question, but if you can just let me ask one more. So on the topic of, again, uh anti-racist practice and um equity in the classroom, how is, how is this being taught? You said Better Lesson, but that's ten people, right? It's ten people getting that?
About fifteen, actually, yeah.
Okay, so fifteen out of, how many teachers do we have?
Couple hundred.
So that's not much. So how is it getting to? I use Better Lesson myself. I have nothing bad to say about them. I love them. I currently have thirty out of, they have twenty eight out of thirty people getting something with Better Lesson. They're great. Love them. The teachers say wonderful things. Whole staff is getting PD with um cultural and equity and inclusive practice presenter three, four times this school year. So how how are they learning this?
So our whole staff is getting it twice this school year. We've already had it once. We have it another time in April. And then the the coaching, uh the folks who are being coached are also presenting to their own faculty about their experiences. And so the hope is to continue on next year.
And how, so last, I'd say, good, I thank you for that. How are administrators being able to observe or evaluate these things in the classrooms? Are they being trained at what to look for and what it's supposed to look like? So they know how to evaluate it and then help push it further?
Yeah.
Good question. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Marty.
No, I mean, coincidentally, we, we have some, Sue's been organizing some trainings for our administrators and, uh, working with Kristen Rodriguez, former master superintendent and former, and she's done a lot of work for, for DESI at the state level. So that's something we could talk to her about is kind of making sure that's incorporated into that training to make sure that we, you know, evaluators understand what observable practice to look for, to ensure that the PD that we've had is kind of translating into something actionable at the classroom level. So, and then, you know, any of our administrators, feel free to jump in. If, you know, we could, if you want to, more of a sampling of how this is happening and how it's translating into practice at the school level. I don't know, would you like, would you like some more thoughts on that from our team or what would be helpful?
If, if they have specifics about how it has been happening or is, or is being put out, that is, that is helpful. Because, I mean, the reason it's on our goals is because it hasn't been. And it's been an issue and it's been brought to us. So I just, yeah, I would love to hear how it's being addressed if, if that has begun. Thank you.
Any admin have some ideas you want to chime in?
So sorry, I had to get everything squared away. Hi, everybody. Good evening. I'm not sure if you're seeing the weekly messages that Nicole Allen and I are sending every Friday. But we've made a pretty large, significant focus since that we returned to school in January with advisory lessons on systemic racism that our peer leadership class has developed. So our peer leadership class is taught by Will Sullivan, our eighth grade civics teacher, and Meg Tucker, our school adjustment counselor. And together with the 16 students in peer leadership, they have created lessons that have outlined a timeline going back hundreds of years in our country on how systemic racism was developed and the themes that have emerged throughout all of those centuries. One of the timeline dates is discussing Willie O'Ree as the first African American, Canadian, American to play for the Boston Bruins. And our advisory lessons that began with the peer leadership on systemic racism have now gone into watching the documentary Willie that just was launched this month. We had been planning this long in advance of Willie being inducted into the hall of, the, his shirt being retired. So that only heightened the excitement for our students and the buy in for our students that this was something that was now kind of a current event, talking about Willie O'Ree. So we've been able to put together a lot of really nice lessons in an advisory, which is that smaller setting where students can focus on some of those SEL skills that we need to foster and develop. It's also provided our, our staff a lot of resources and a lot of information to be able to open up to that discussion. I think that what we've learned a great deal through some of our work in CLEI so far is the vulnerability of talking and having these conversations. So this has provided both middle schools an entryway into beginning this important work. But we're certainly not done. We're looking forward to some of the recommendations that CLEI will make and look forward to continuing this work, not only this year, but in, in the years to come. So I don't know if that fully answers your question, Ryan, but I hope that gives a little idea of what we're, what we're doing at the middle school.
It does very much. Thank you. Can you, do you happen to know where Mr. Sullivan got the lessons he's using?
They developed them, the, the students. So the, the 16 eighth graders and Mr. Sullivan and Mrs. Tucker, our school adjustment counselor, they talked about what was most important to them and what they felt the rest of the student bodies would need to know in order to deliver this effectively. Our, our PD from Better Lesson back on October, I want to say 13th, began the conversation on systemic racism. So I know that, um, Mr. Sullivan was able to take that information back to his peer leadership students to foster that growth and development in this area.
Great, thank you.
I can, I can add, thanks, thanks Beth for at the, you know, at the middle level. We have, we don't have advisory, but we definitely have a similar structure called morning meeting. That's implemented at all three of our elementary schools. And so we have through our social emotional curriculums, lessons that the teachers embed, you know, some of those talking points with regard to anti racism. And we've also, you know, talked about white supremacy in, in the older grades as well. So we've also focused some staff meetings on just recent events that have taken place. Some of the work that we are doing with CLEI in order to empower our staff to have these, as, as Beth said, you know, to have these uncomfortable conversations among staff so that we can then have some sentence starters with our kids or we can respond to some of the questions. I'm also, you know, working with our school council to, to make this a forefront of our conversation and, and having them reach out to families and just continue the conversation at that, that level with, with that support group that each of us has at our own school. So like Beth said, I think we're, we're starting to be a little braver to have those conversations with our staff and with our students. Our teachers at the elementary level continue to look for, you know, literature that highlights marginalized groups. You know, making sure that we get books in the hands of kids, whether they're digital or, or actual paper books that focus on, on some of these topics. And so those are, those are some of the kind of initial ways that we're, that we're looking to bring this conversation and to lighten and really to create kids who want to make some, some changes on behalf of social justice. So just a little snippet from elementary.
Thank you. I know Bronwyn had a question, but if another principal wanted to talk, I wouldn't call you off. You can, you can say so now. Okay, Bronwyn, go ahead.
I think Tom wanted to say something from the high school.
Sorry, I can't see everybody. So if, Tom, did you want to speak?
You got to unmute Tom.
Thanks. I just want to add really quickly, Ryan, to your question. The goal is to work anti racist education into all subjects, but formally right now it's being taught in every social studies class, every English class, all of our health classes. It's been added as a, as a, as a health issue, which, which I give credit to their wellness department and Megan Roy and Rita Hawker, but they've added that as a formal issue, one of the, one of the, the half a dozen main units that we do and also in peer leadership. And just to answer your question about what we're using, we're using, we do have about a half a dozen student teachers who are doing a different lesson, but we're using mostly teaching tolerance, which is Southern Poverty law. Great resource we've been using for years. And we're also using some ADL, some Anti-Definitional League. And just to answer your question about evaluations, um, the department chairs and evaluators are having those dialogues as to when you do the pre and post evaluation, you know, how are you doing that? How are you working in? I mean, it's, it's evident in, in social studies and English classes and peer leadership and health because it's so much part of the curriculum. But I just wanted to give you that flavoring that's going on at the high school.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all that information. Bronwyn?
Thank you. In regards to the slide that's up right now, I feel like there might be, we have another question maybe that should be up there. I, I think. So I'm wondering how we're going to service the students that could be behind in September with this pre pandemic budget model. So I feel like it's all or nothing at this point in terms of either we go back to 21 or we keep everybody that's on right now. I don't want to, September to come and people say parents or teachers, you know, this many students are really behind in math and literacy or whatever, regardless of grade. Then we have to start putting plans in place. Then we have to start hiring people. I know we can't tell for sure right now how many people will be behind. But I think probably at this point we must have some kind of idea. So I, I don't know if not budgeting for anything in this regard is the best idea. I was just wondering, Marty, what you thought.
Yeah, I think, I think you said it well. I, you know, it's posed as an or, but really it's like and or, right? It's, it's, it doesn't necessarily mean choose between one or the other. So I think, you know, I think you framed that really well. And I think we're starting to understand what, what students' needs are. The, uh, the iReady testing that's going on will give us a clear idea on a student by student basis where, where kids stand. And then, you know, certainly even on the, the other side of that NTSS triangle, understanding what, you know, what kids need in terms of social emotional supports. So I, I think we, you know, I wouldn't suggest that we wait on how, deciding how we're going to leverage any additional funds. Uh, I don't think we should be waiting until, you know, May or June. I think, I think we should make that decision much sooner based on the needs that we're, we're seeing emerge right now. And so, you know, it was only this morning that we learned that, you know, we're looking at that $498,000 stimulus fund, and then we're anticipating more depending on quickly the feds move. So I think we should, uh, you know, if, if the, if the committee wanted to, um, you know, achieve a, a higher, you know, if you wanted to seek additional appropriation or raise the general fund request, we certainly could come to you with a plan to, for how that, how we might, you know, deploy the additional resources. So I think that's, that's certainly something that we shouldn't wait very long on. But I think, you know, we, we are wrapping up our Help Me Out Principals, wrapping up iReady testing. Is that, is that fair? And so we'll have a, a good idea of how many students will, will need particular supports. So, and anybody else, I, you know, Sue or, or any principal, if you want to, I think Bronwyn asked, asked a really good question about, you know, we don't want to wait until, we don't want to wait until the summertime even to make these decisions. I think we need to move quicker.
Right. Yeah, posing it as an either, either or seems really too black and white. There's this whole place in the middle that we need to be thinking about what kind of services we need, how to best implement them. Our iReady and BASS assessments are going on. Middle school is almost a hundred percent assessed for iReady. Elementary is mostly, they have a few stragglers that need to get tested. And then a small group of high schoolers are going to start assessment in a week or so. That will give us some really good information on where to start addressing the gaps. I think we actually talked about, maybe if we get some kids in for additional services or targeted instruction sometime between now and the end of the school year. It's a tough day for kids, online all day. And so it's a tough time to be kind of asking kids to come and do more. But we're thinking about kind of exciting ways to draw kids in as opposed to traditional kind of after school. And we're definitely going to, going to beef up our summer program, K-12. So we've been talking lots about that. And next year, I think if we voted a level service that would put all of our specialists back into elementary school of providing a, a spot for students to receive small group targeted instructions and one to one. Hard to say right now. My, my preliminary opinion is that's probably not enough. We would need to use some of the ESSR funds to, to shore those services up or reduce class size. So lots of things going through all of our heads now about that. But good question, Bronwyn. Thank you.
Marty, how much of that money, the grant you were speaking of, that you found out about this morning?
Yeah.
Would that all be used for positions if we needed it? Or does it have other places to go as well?
So I think again, sort of depending on the path of the pandemic, if we anticipate that there is going to be a large number of students involved in remote learning, we might need to make sure that we have all the digital learning tools available to them. So that'd be one sort of category of, you know, one allocation we would need to think about. You know, I think we're in good shape with, with PPE and, and other mitigation related supplies and ventilation. So I think largely that money would be invested in personnel. You know, depending on, again, looking, I think that's something that we need to make that decision in combination with the, with the committee is, you know, I think Sue said it very well. How much of the available funds would be applied to reducing class size? How much of the available sun funds would be directed towards hiring staff and educators to provide targeted supports? So, you know, that's something that we certainly would welcome the feedback and direction of the committee on. You know, we have, we have some time to, to make these decisions, but, but certainly we wouldn't want to wait too, too long on that.
I mean, I personally feel by not putting anything at all in the budget is, uh, for me, not a great approach. But at the same time, I don't know what the requirements are going to be. We know that there's going to be students, I mean, because it started last March, they were online from March to June. And then, you know, hybrid for quite a while for some of them until they went back full recently.
Yeah.
So we're going to have a decent amount of students that need some of those targeted interventions. So not putting anything in the budget seems.
And knowing that you don't really have to, Tom, Tom has it, I hope I'm framing this, saying this correctly. You don't really have to, right now, sort of put the federal stimulus money, the ESSR two money into the budget. That, that will come to us as a grant and we'll have an opportunity to work with the committee on how to apply those funds. So it would be, if you felt that we needed to increase the, the general fund request, then that might be something that we want to think more about right now. So Tom, I, I, would you say I captured that accurately? I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, I think you, you captured it very accurately, Marty. We'll, um, we'll bring forward usually sometime in the fall revisions for the budget based on changes. So any grants that we might have received after the budget gets approved. I suspect based on how we'll proceed, we'll, we'll want to bring forward our proposal for this particular allocation sooner. Since it's a new grant, usually our grants are recurring and we know how they're going to be spent for the most part. But with the questions that we have and uncertainty of how we move forward, I think, you know, you'll see us sometime in the next month or two, bring forward a proposal on how we would recommend using the, that allocation.
Ryan, I have a follow up to that.
Okay.
So do I, Ryan.
Is it the same one as mine, Suzie?
I, I think I'm a, if I'm a mind reader. Okay. I'm wondering, I just to clarify, because I really want to make sure that the, the number you shared in the original slide, Marty, that you just heard about today is the re, is the quote unquote allocation for this fiscal year, fiscal year 21, correct?
No, that's, that's for fiscal year 22. That's, that's.
Oh, that's for 22. Okay. Because I thought I heard you say this is, this is actually coming this year. Okay.
My apologies. We'll, we'll get the application in February and it can be applied. I don't know when, when you can start applying it, but you can apply it all the way through fiscal 22. So that money would be available to us to, to work with the committee to develop a plan for how we want to apply those funds. And then if, if the, you know, if what we're seeing and reading at the federal level comes to fruition, we would expect even a, probably a second round of stimulus funds on top of that $490. So it would be, I think the juncture we're at right now is whether or not you want to make a, a higher general fund request.
Right. The net, the net of which would actually not be that, would not end up being that higher general fund request. We would, we would offset the general fund request by the, by the grant dollars?
So long as we're not planting local, with the, the grant funds. The grant funds are supposed to augment your existing staffing and programming. The grant funds are supposed to augment your existing staffing and programming.
Right. Um.
Oh, so isn't that a, isn't that a no? We we would, to use that four ninety eight, you would actually budget less and then use it, not budget more and then have it replace with a budget for more.
Mr. Mazza.
Say what I'm saying?
Yeah, you you wouldn't, you wouldn't.
I think either scenario means supplanting, but.
I don't think you would use it to decrease the eight hundred and forty that is in the current recommendation in front of you.
Agreed.
If we were to move forward with uh, bringing on more staff to address class size, to address uh, the targeted instruction that Sue was talking about, uh, and we realize that that cost is, say, seven hundred thousand, we could decide that five hundred of the S R two money could be used to offset that that figure, and then the rest would have to come from somewhere else. Whether it be general fund, whether it be a reallocation within our budget, whether it be additional federal money we get down the road. Um, to me, that wouldn't be supplanting of what uh, the the district is approving for resources in the F Y twenty two budget.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Jamie, you are next.
Sorry.
Yep, uh, Marty, can you, can you go to the slide that just shows the total dollars? I think it shows thirty seven, thirty eight million dollars. Anyone does not here, is that the one?
That's the one, yep. So I I I guess all I caution the group on uh, with regards to this and why I I completely disagree with what everybody is saying um, wholeheartedly um, is we did this all this year. We got, we were handed thirty eight million dollars by the town. We added thirteen people, we figured out what we what we needed to do with that thirty eight million dollars. We did not spend that anywhere near what we had budgeted for. We made the decisions, we made adjustments within the best interest of the schools at that time. I think everybody's getting into the weeds about what we're going to need and what we're not going to need. And you don't know it, and I don't know it. All I know is if we are going to be allocating and asking for thirty eight million dollars, I'm sorry, thirty eight million nine hundred fifty seven thousand dollars, um, eight hundred fifty four, eight hundred forty thousand above what we asked for last year from the general fund. Yet, we're going to talk in about thirty minutes here about how we're going to spend the million dollars that we haven't spent yet in investing in the schools. Um, I have a hard time with that. I I don't think it makes any sense. Um, I think the reality is, is we we're getting into the weeds about what we're going to need and what we're not going to need. We don't know what's going to be needed. If there, if we need additional support, we're going to spend that eight hundred grand on, you know, support that we need for our students and not invest maybe in the things we're going to talk about later on today. Um, so I think anything above the twenty one budget, um, I'd really like to sit here the argument as to why why we would ever be asking for more than that from the town. It just doesn't make any sense to me. So that's just my two cents on it, just looking at it, what we're going to talk about later on in today's meeting, so.
Thank you. I mean, just for the record, not everybody was saying that because um, I'm actually in agreement with you. But we did already have this discussion in finance sub, so um, I am in agreement. That's why I was making the point that the um, grant dollars that they're talking about would be in addition to whatever we plan for. So I'm actually with you. Um, Marty, go to the M T S S slide, please.
Ryan, hold on, can I, can I just follow up? Because I I think I'm a little bit confused.
Done.
I I want to make sure I understand what you and Jamie just said, which is, I think what you said is you support the the budget proposal right now, which is.
Marty, Marty's put a question on the board a couple of times that says um, the way we plan for like allocation and staffing that we planned for pre pandemic. And the second option is during pandemic, which is an increase of like thirteen people. Jamie, if I can, if not, if I'm saying this correctly, Jamie and I are saying the pre pandemic model is what we agree with. A, in the belief and hope that we are going to have a post pandemic um, world, it's actually going to be post pandemic. And B, with the federal grant money coming in, should we have additional needs? We can use that. And C, don't tend to use our whole budget anyway. So we could do the same thing we did this year, which is adjust and have Tom work his magic and find the money we need for positions when and if we need them.
Right, and that is consistent with both of you saying you support the number that is on this slide.
Sure, though, yeah, the one that Marty's, that's what, that's what this number is, correct, Marty?
And and to be clear, you know, again, we're we're only at, this is just your recommendation and 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 you have an opportunity to think about it and ask us questions. And it won't come to a vote until a meeting in February, so.
Another good point, we are not voting tonight. But yes, that is the point Jamie and I are making.
Yeah.
So move, can you go to the M T S S slide, the one, the the picture there with the tiers? Again, I think Jamie just made a good point that maybe we're getting in the weeds too much, but this was in my head, so I'm going to ask anyway. So are we going to be spending money, are we going to be looking to spend money on increasing the number of people who can, who are doing pullout services for kids? Or or is it possible, because I I actually favor this, increasing the capacity of our current staff to help all students above or below the norm? So giving all of our teachers more support, a- as my special teachers like to mention, special education is great education and it works for everybody. So the more all of our teachers about it, the better off we are. And then we can get to the point Bronwyn is making is we may have an increased number of kids who have some gaps from this year. So if we have an entire um, teaching staff capable of uh, analyzing and addressing those needs, then we don't, we don't actually have to spend on more staff. We're spending on our current staff and helping them get better. So when the the talk of what we're doing for interventions, I guess my question is, are we talking about pullout classes or are we talking about helping our current staff get better at helping our students?
I I think we we should not approach it as we need to pull more kids out at all. I think it's more about how do we, how do we design, you know, u- using the principles of universal design, how do we design instruction to ensure that kids have access, equitable access to what's happening in the classroom? And what types of training and and support can we provide our educators to make sure that happens? Not to say that it, you know, that that there would never be um, you know, up times when students would need some of the targeted pullout instruction, but that would not be the working assumption, I would say.
Excellent, thank you. Any other uh, budget questions?
Yeah, Ryan, if you.
Glad, Kevin.
Jumping in, um, first, I I really enjoyed the conversation. Um, I thank everybody for for their thoughtful comments. I know I've definitely been learning a lot about what everybody's asking. So thank you for for all of the good questions. Um, I I want to follow up on on just a couple of things. I I really think it does make sense to go with the proposal, um, which is, you know, following on what our our normal year budget would be. Um, and and Tom, I I wonder if it might be helpful for you to remind um, all of us, including people who might be watching at home, you know, what happens, because I think we've alluded to this several times, you know, the turnback funds. You know, I think the previous fiscal year, you know, we gave a a bunch of money back to the town. And I just want to remind folks, you know, that that, Tom, you you do an amazing job with the financial stewardship of this budget. And and I just, if you could remind folks like how we've done over the last couple of years, uh, I think that'll give some good perspective as to how we steward this money um, and and make sure that that we're, we're not, you know, spending uh, what we're budgeted in a normal year.
Yeah, uh, Kevin, the committee voted to turn back nine hundred and ninety five thousand dollars in in F Y twenty. Um, the prior year was uh, just under uh, ten thousand. Um, the year before that, it was a hundred and about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, so, I mean, we do, as you indicate, uh, look at the needs and invest um, where necessary, but unspent funds do get returned back to the town. Uh, and um, are then, you know, addressed through town meeting, whether they go into the operational stabilization or uh, free cash.
Yeah, no, no, thank you, Tom. I appreciate you um, reminding us of that. And and I guess, you know, I really, to to Bronwyn's point, Bronwyn's point and some others, I mean, I really like the idea of sort of thinking about the money that hopefully we'll get from, you know, the federal government, state government, whatever it might be, uh, to address some of these needs that we know are are coming. I really like, like that, you know, planning for it to help the kids who we know are are struggling in this environment. So I think all of that makes a lot of good sense, so thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other questions?
Ryan?
Go ahead, Gianna.
Thank you. Um, just a quick question for Tom. Tom, thanks for your time earlier. You're always so gracious with me with your patience and your information. I forgot to to check in or, you know, or maybe now is when I'm supposed to be doing it. Um, the the slide with the money that's budgeted for the substitute teacher increase, can you, so like this twenty six thousand, you you know, this twenty six thousand, can you tell us, how does that put us in comparison with other districts? Like, does that bring us even with it? Like, does it make us competitive or like, because we were so low, it seems like. And like, how do, how does that help us, you know?
Yeah, the way, the way I factored that amount, Gianna, was I kind of pulled all the lines that we uh, pay our daily subs from, whether it be teachers or paraprofessionals specifically. And uh, averaged, looked at our trends uh, exclusive of F Y twenty because of the pandemic. And even this year, I kind of excluded what I anticipate we'll spend. But looking at the prior years, came up with an average of how much we've been spending. Again, and I excluded long term subs because they're handled separately on how they get paid. But I I came up and and did a factor of a fifteen percent increase to those lines to support um, if a rate gets approved, to increase the amount that uh, daily teacher or paraprofessional substitutes are paid.
So it, so is there a way, like, again, in my brain, is there a way like to say to me or anybody else that might want the same information? Like, Isang Medo pays their substitute teachers a hundred dollars a day? Like, what, what will we be paying our substitute teachers by day? I I I think it's by day, correct?
Yeah, it would be a daily rate for a sub. I I think um, I don't want to quote numbers. I think I would need to want to pull that current information. I think some districts have, have made some adjustments due to the co to COVID to to try to attract subs. But I think if you can give me some time to pull that information and bring forward that comparison to to kind of put together a recommendation that might um, that might make sense in terms of what rates we might propose for an increase.
Yeah, that, I mean, you know, I would totally appreciate that. I I feel like, you know, especially when we're talking about attracting and retaining, you know, excellent staff. And I feel like if we need to, you know, really look at the increase of the substitute pay rate, then it would be worth it to see what the surrounding communities are doing. Um, I I would like that information anyway. I don't know if anybody else. And thank you, Tom, again. You're always so so great about that stuff.
We will anticipate bringing it to finance sub at some point, and we 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 would have that comparison information for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You asking is always enough, Gianna. You don't need other people asking too. Uh, Jamie, you have a question?
Yeah, just, just two things. Um, so uh, Tom, can you just, the attrition number that's on the page that we're looking at right now, is that a, is that a firm number and an estimate based off of what you know today?
Uh, that is a a firm number, my my sense. It's what I know as of right now, that will occur. I anticipate, you know, it may go up, but it it's known uh, changes that will occur or have occurred. I think, Jamie, to your point with uh, with that number, a lot of that has already been recognized in F Y twenty one. So some of these changes are catching up to staffing um, events that occurred this fiscal year that are now going to be reflected in the twenty two budget because of turnover that has already happened. But that's a firm number.
And then for everybody on the uh, that's watching or watching the recording of it, the nine oh three number is hundred percent is the, I'll let you finish exactly what that is.
Um, well, we, it is uh, it is a reflection of, you know, our goals in terms of negotiating. We do not have collective bargaining agreements settled for next year. So again, looking at uh, where we've been in terms of our our collective bargaining over the last few years, I think it's representative of uh, what we've done in those years.
Good. And then just, just the last thing in in regards to Gianna, just so no one's surprised, kind of outside. I think bringing it to finance sub makes a ton, ton of sense with regards to the substitute. Um, I think it's a little bit bigger discussion than just the pay pay rate. Um, so I think it's going to be a little bit more than just, hey, you know, where do we compare? Should we be here or there? Um, because I think it's a little bit more of a robust conversation that we need to have as a group to figure out, uh, aside from kicking the can down the road here, kind of looking at this holistically and going uh, kind of how do we want to look at this over time? And, you know, one part of it would be, you know, the salary rate increase for those who, you know, whose services and skills we're utilizing. But um, there there's a bigger conversation here that we can bring to the entire group, but I think it makes tons of sense, so.
Thanks, Jamie. Anybody else with a question on the uh, budget proposal? All right, so next up um, on our agenda, thank you, Superintendent, thank you, Marty. Thank you, principals, for answering our questions. Much appreciated. Next up is administrative reports. Superintendent report.
Sure, and uh, thanks, thanks to our admin team for for turning out tonight and for um, answering some important questions. I I think uh, I'm thinking at this point, we're, you you're free to go unless there's something the committee would like to have them stay for, but I think otherwise we're we're good. So thank you, everybody, you've had long days. Well done. Thanks for your teamwork on that. Um, uh, quickly, uh, superintendent report, I I would um, I'd mention uh, tomorrow night. Uh, so we we have a a really comprehensive partnership with an organization that we're really excited about called Minding Your Mind. And so we are bringing uh, Minding Your Mind to our parents, to our educators and to our students at at uh, almost all levels. And so tomorrow night, we have a uh, parent interactive webinar um, specifically for L P S. It's a live webinar, seven o'clock, the notice has gone out. Um, hopefully anybody, parents that are still watching, uh, have an opportunity to register. And then that's that's for parents of teens and tweens. And then on February fourth, we have a parent program for um, parents of children in uh, elementary school. So uh, mindful parenting, that's what it's called. And then uh, programming at the uh, at the classroom level for our middle schoolers and our high schoolers and um, uh, also some programming for staff. So we're we're uh, one of the things that we've done with the Special Programs Committee is to try to create community wide conversations. So rather than bringing a speaker who's just for parents or just for staff or just for kids, we look for opportunities to bring in um, organizations and speakers that talk to the whole community at once. So um, I'm really happy about that. Thanks to the Close Coalition for um, really partnering with the Special Programs Committee this year. They've kind of pivoted, as everybody has in the middle of the pandemic, uh, to uh, helping us kind of build resiliency in young people. So thank you, Paul McNeil and the Close Coalition. I would also mention that we uh, we continue to investigate the pooled testing. There was another webinar on Friday that a number of us participated in. The application is due to the state on Thursday. I do plan on going ahead with that application just to make sure that we're still in a position to do it. I will say that um, again, there there's some complexity to this that uh, we need to understand further. Um, and we've had some conversations with the L E A, with our district health folks and town health folks. I'd like to get everybody on the same page in terms of the direction that we go with that pooled testing. So uh, that's all I got. I'm happy to answer any questions or if there's something I'm missing that you want me to talk about, let me know.
Anybody with a question? No slides, no questions?
No slides.
I appreciate the looking into more the, and we for Kevin to put the light back on. The um, The pool testing. Anything that gets more kids in will be great for us to learn more about. So, thank you. I don't have a chair report. Student rep report. Maxim, you still with us? There he is.
Yes, hello. Just a short report, three clubs today. Climate Change Club, I'm not sure if I mentioned, they set up an Instagram, can be found at, at LHS Climate Change Club. On Instagram, the Jet Jotter, I'm just going to mention again, also set up an Instagram and Twitter last week, at the Jet Jotter. And our website, as usual, is www.thejettjotter.com. We'll have some stories actually coming out this week for which we interviewed school committee members or. Our writers interviewed a few school committee members. Stock Club has been having guest speakers who have experience in the market come in. And talk to the club about investing. Today, they had a person who's a little bit. Who's like a college student, as far as I understand, who's been investing since seventh grade, shares portfolio, give them advice, predictions, and all sorts of stuff like that. That's all I have for today.
Very good. Thank you, Max. Do we have an LPVC report?
The last meeting, we reviewed the initial budget. We won't vote on that for quite some time now.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have an energy and sustainability report?
We do. We're going to get to an item later on in the agenda. About electric vehicle charging stations, but there was some stuff that came up at our last meeting that I did want to share with folks. And it's related to the Green Community Grant Program. And one thing that they stressed, and I think this is, I mean, it's not surprising, but it's important to remind ourselves. You know, if you're looking at saving. Being more energy efficient and sustainable in the town. The six biggest energy users in town by far are our schools. And so if we want to have an impact in town for reducing energy and becoming more sustainable. The schools is where we need to look. And so that's one of the things that Green Community folks want to encourage us to do. And so the town manager, Lynn Simmons, and Nick Gorgantus. Are going to to look into, you know, an energy audit to try to figure out what are the best ways? To, to reduce our, our energy footprint. And I think that's the, the key thing that the folks at Green Communities want to encourage us to do. You know, there's a lot of talk in our committee about how we need to put solar panels on the roof and do all this other stuff. And the Green Community folks are like, no, first. You need to weatherize more, get better windows. You know, do the things to reduce the amount of energy you use before you start thinking about. You know, geothermal heating or solar panels and things like that. So. Anyway, I just wanted to, to give you guys that update and, you know, if anybody is interested in, in talking more about that, I'm happy to do it. And, and Tom, I don't know. If, you know, that's something that, that you'd be interested in, in talking to the committee about, but, you know, we can talk about that offline. So, anyway, that's my report.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm, I'm betting new middle schools would help with our energy issues too.
Indeed.
Open space, Jamie? Or do you have a question?
Yeah, could I just ask a question? So since we, since we just built a brand new school, you assume they're all new windows. Are they saying, don't do them on the high school we get? Or is that? Are they just saying it's kind of an all-inclusive thing and don't do it school by school, or?
They're, they're saying any way we can save energy are ways, are things that we should do. And I think they, what they want to do is, is really get us, you know, an up-to-date energy audit. So we can figure out where we're going to get the most for our investment.
Gianna, you have a question?
Kevin, thanks for all that, and thanks for all your efforts on that. You might have said this, but, like. We have a thing, like Mass Save came out and like, did an energy audit of our house. Is that like something that? Like?
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do, and that's what the town manager and Nick are going to work on. To try and get that for the schools and, and, you know, get one that, that is as current as possible so we can get the best possible recommendations.
So is there like a, like, are they looking into like a grant that would pay for that audit, or how is that?
So, so I don't think we're going to need to pay for the audit. The Green Communities folks, they have a grant program. Where if that audit identifies things that, that we can, you know, improve our energy footprint on, that's what the grants are for. And so that's what we're really hoping to do is identify the best things we can do and then put a grant forward for the Green Communities folks. And then they would give us money to, to implement whatever those energy-saving strategies are.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jamie, do you have an open space report?
Nope.
Finance, Mr. Mazza?
Thank you, Ryan. Tonight in your packet, you have a, two financial reports for FY twenty one. I think it's timely in terms of providing you a snapshot. That Finance Sub looked at at one of our previous meetings. So the first. Report would be the FY twenty one revolving account report. Showing the revenue we've collected from various sources, whether it be food service, athletic fees. Obviously, our rental. Building rental income is, is very down. We, we are not continually, we continue not to rent our, our. Buildings out for outside events. So it is, again, just kind of. To give the, the committee an update on where we stand, I would say. On this report, the two areas that are probably the biggest concern would be athletics and food service. Specifically, food service. We have much lower participation, obviously, between remote days and. The model that we've been under for the last four or five months. Is impacting the number of, of students that we are serving meals to. So. Although we are seeing reduced costs, we still have. I still project that we're going to have a significant loss in that program by the end of the year. So hopefully now that, you know, we're back in person, third grade is. Four days a week, we'll start seeing some more stable. Financial reports, but with the reduction in, in-person days in February, in January, and December. We, we did see some, some losses in those months. So. In athletics. Again, this would. Be reflective, I would say, of the fall season. The report is from early January, so it reflects the income and expenses that. Were incurred, I would say, through the first sport season. And again, knowing that at some point later this year, we, we committed to go back and look at fees. That may impact that revenue line if, if a decision is made. To do something in regards to athletic fees. So those would be two areas I think Finance Sub has, has been watching. Closely as we continue to go through the year as to what impact they may have on FY twenty one budget. Transitioning into the FY twenty one year to budget report. I did incorporate what I assumed.
Can I, can I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Tom. Can I ask you a question about that before you move on?
Sure.
I know we've been talking about it in finance sub, but we haven't out publicly. So just on the athletic fees, I want to. I'm curious, based on the idea, like, for example, my son played soccer. And there were five games last year. Thankfully, the state title team had twenty three, I think it was. With so many fewer bus trips and referees and, and the associated cost with actually having games. Is it possible that when we look back on athletics over the year, that we're going to be talking about? Refunds to all three sports? Only winter sports, only spring sports? What might be the plan, seeing as the? Parents paying the fees really didn't get the same product? I know that we've spoken before that the number of weeks. Was the same, but it would be difficult to argue that five games is the same as twenty three games. And I'm only using just the one, one sport as an example. So just so people know. Could you tell them that we are?
Yeah, I think, I think, Ryan, we would want to look at the whole season. I don't think, you know, our consideration would just be winter. I do think we would go back and. Have a consideration for the fall. I don't know if it'll be a consistent. Recommendation for each of the three sport seasons. I think some of it will depend on. The number of games, the number of weeks, you know, how, how much interruption was there during the season? Due to, due to pandemic. So I do think we will go back. I, you know, I would go even farther and say even busing. I know we charged. Participants who are utilizing the bus service, the, the full rate, but. You know, the year started off in the hybrid model, so would we consider possibly looking at a refund on transportation fees? So. I think all of the fees will be looked at, but I think we need to get a little farther into the, the year to really know. What is, what's fair, what financially is viable for us? So I don't think anything's off the table at this point.
Great, thank you. Suzie?
Yeah, before you go on, Tom, thank you for that, because that was one of my questions. My other question is, I just want to know. Because I remember, and I don't know the scope of it, so this is where I think it's, it's helpful just to get a little bit more information. You said we'd be, you know, kind of running in a deficit as far as food services is concerned, but we also have. A federal program going on whereby we're getting reimbursed for lunches for students. So tell me how that works.
Yeah, so we are currently offering all meals are free to every student. Whether they're in school or participating in the curbside pickup on Monday and Wednesday. I think what we're seeing, though, is that. Participation is not at a level where we're even to say we're breaking even. Based on our cause associated to producing them. Even though we're, you know, we're, when we run in-person learning in a food service program. We still have the same number of staff. When we have all students in school, especially at elementary and middle school level. At the high school, we're able to revise our staffing a little bit to reduce, to accommodate. But because those other schools usually only have two or three people in those, to serve the students. Really didn't have a lot of room to, to reduce staffing in those, in those schools. I think the, the estimated loss, I mean, I don't know where it's going to end, but the trend we're looking at. Could probably be anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand for food service. Yeah, I mean, again, I'm hopeful that, you know, that's probably worst-case scenario. I think I have a meeting later this week with our food service provider projecting out. Where we're going to go. I'm hopeful the spring and months will show us a better financial outcome than what we've been seeing. But. But if what, if our financials that we're, we've been seeing the last four months continue, that's about where we would land.
Okay, wow. Thank you.
If there's no other questions on the revolving account, on that note, Suzie, though, I did build that into. My projection in the FY twenty one year-to-date budget report. I did. Make the worst-case scenario assumption, at least as, as best I know at this time, where that will end up. I think we're fortunate to have that program to offer the meals to students, but. But we're seeing such a, such a. Decrease in the number of participants right now. It's. It's, it's definitely, you know, the program is not able to be self-sufficient.
Right, because it reimburses based on the number of participants.
Based on the meals we serve, not the cost.
Yeah, not the, exactly, yeah.
So unfortunately, it's great to be able to offer them, but we encourage families participated, you know. At every opportunity they can. So talking about the FY twenty one year-to-date budget report, again, I think Jamie alluded to a little earlier. The trend that we're seeing in twenty one, you know, right now. There are a number of, of salary lines that we are seeing significant. Spending that is below what we have budgeted. Again, I think because of attrition, because of staffing changes that have occurred. The number of employees that have taken a leave of absence for a portion or the entire year. And the salaries of the individuals that have been hired to replace them are. At a lower rate than what we budgeted. So. I would say that's probably the, the highest contributor to. The balance we're seeing, the unexpended balance we're projecting for FY twenty one. Obviously, some of the other lines that we have budgeted for. Substitutes, we're most certainly not seeing the number of substitutes that we normally have. In a given year, so those costs are well below what the trends would say we would, we would anticipate spending. Travel regarding professional development. We're obviously not sending people out for. PD, so we're, we're avoiding those costs. So. The one area that this, this projection might be a little low are, would be in our natural gas costs. I normally would use prior year months to, to project out, but. With the adjustments we've been making to try to keep temperatures at a. Comfortable level with the windows being open and with the weather having gotten colder, it's, you know, we're obviously. I think using more natural gas than what we have been in previous years. So. Again, I don't think it'll be a significant impact, but that might be an area where. We might exceed the projection amounts that I used in this document. So I do, you know, at this point, we are seeing a, a significant amount that will go on spend in the general fund. I think I would say, again, it's subject to change, and my approach is usually pretty conservative, so. That number may go up, again, depending upon how things. Play out over the next five months. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any, on the year-to-year-to-day budget report before I get into the. The request for an investment.
Any questions? All right, Tom, I don't see any.
All right, great, thank you. So the next item that Finance Sub. Reviewed and brought forward for consideration tonight. Is a proposal to use a portion of that balance that is projected to be available in FY twenty one. The breakdown is in front of you for those that, those are watching at home. The request is for four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And again, I'll, I'll just briefly go through what, what that comprises of, and. So people watching understand. We are looking for two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for technology that would address. Two hundred and forty-five Chromebooks that we have had for approximately five or six years, so they're approaching the end of their useful life. We've identified them as needing replacement for next school year. Again, that would support our one-to-one initiative, so it would allow us to continue. To ensure that all students have a device. And there are a hundred and seventy-five. Computers that would be used for either computer tech labs. Or learning labs throughout the district, one at every building and two at the high school. Again, it, it allows us to continue the, to teach the curriculum that we're used to. It allows for more creative learning opportunities for students that. Although each student has a Chromebook, I think the limitations are a little different than what the devices that we're proposing can do in these spaces. So, again, these devices would need to come offline either way. You know, we can no longer sustain them. You know, again, they're, they're at the end of their useful life. They're no longer going to be supported. You can't update them. They, they create a security and a, you know, a maintenance challenge for us. So. Our plan would be, we would have to. We would have to do things differently if we don't have a replacement for these devices for next school year. Benchmark assessment material is an assessment used in grades K through five. The current assessment is about eight years old. This would allow for, I believe, every educator in, in grades K through five to have this updated material. Most certainly. This is my area of expertise. I'm sure Sue could probably provide a little more detail if, if members are interested in terms of. What the newer material offers in terms of the assessment. But I don't know, Sue, if you want to jump in?
Sure. The new assessment kit utilizes our up-to-date literature for students, and what the benchmark assessment system does is. It's a system where classroom teachers meet one-to-one with their students to determine what their reading level is, their independent reading level. Their instructional reading level, and it helps them place students into groups for targeted instruction. And then the new baskets have. New section on responding to, to, in writing, to reading, which is a, a big push in the new framework, so.
Thanks, Sue. That amount is forty-six thousand. Dollars. We also have a request for grade three social study books, so that, there's about two hundred and fifteen. It's not adopting new curriculum. It's, it's current books that we. Material we currently use. It's just would provide us for. provide us for newer books. The current books, I believe, are about twenty years old, and that is thirteen thousand dollars. Um, we are requesting up to thirty thousand for a facilities, uh, condition assessment. Um, for our two middle schools to assist, uh, to give us some some updated information. I think we talked about it at our last meeting, so uh, we've been talking about, uh, getting some updated costs associated to, um, replacement of systems and/or new buildings and what it would entail and uh, would cost to, to move forward with that. It would also, um, potentially help us with our SLIs, either, either the one that was submitted um, for this year or the one that would be submitted later this spring for consideration for next year, um, to kinda give us updated information. And the last item is, is a placeholder regarding building security for, uh, adding cameras. In twenty nineteen, school committee authorized, uh, use of funds to put cameras in at the middle and elementary levels. We were able to add about five cameras or so at each of those buildings. And to put a few more, replace a few at the high school that were, uh, problematic. Um, and so what we're asking for is another allocation to expand coverage that, um, the cameras, uh, adding new cameras would provide for, for security at those buildings. So uh, the total, as I indicated, um, is four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, normally, we bring these requests later in the year to you, but with, with the amount, um, that we're looking for to give us an opportunity to kinda get moving on these and not wait until May or June, uh, we figured we'd bring this now. I do anticipate there will be, uh, some additional requests later this year. I know Sue is working with some of the schools on, on some other textbooks that may need to be replaced for next year, so um, just kind of as a full disclosure, I do expect we'll be back with some additional proposals in the spring.
Thanks, Tom. Any questions? Suzie?
Yeah, thank you, Tom, and thank you to the finance subcommittee. I just have a question about the, um, labs in particular and the tech classrooms, because, you know, I, I, I understand they all need to be, you know, completely understand that they all need to be, um, replaced. My only question is, if we replace them now, and again, I'm just thinking from, from the standpoint of, we're not using labs this year. We're not letting kids touch computers that others have touched. Um, are we set, if we're not using them next year, cause kids don't have a vaccine, okay? Um, are, do we go a year of having these and then in two years down the road, they're outdated and we've gotta purchase them again? It's just, just a thought, um, you know, knowing that I, I, I've been through this before with, with, in my previous, uh, gig. So, uh, just wanting to make sure that we're thinking about that.
Thank you. Good question.
That's a good question. Uh, a quick answer, if I was one of the teachers or, or a principal in this situation, is I could pick one group to use them, and then we would use them. Um, obviously, it would stink to be in the group that didn't get to use them, but there's, I guess, one way around it. Gianna, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Ryan. Tom, thanks again for all the information. I, um, did I hear you? I'm on a different device, so I don't have the numbers in front of me. Did you say two hundred and forty-five thousand for the two hundred and forty-five Chromebooks?
No, the Chromebooks themselves is fifty-six thousand. There's an additional hundred and seventy-five, uh, devices that would be on top of the two forty-five. So there's a, a total of four hundred and, uh, twenty or so devices that we would be, uh, replacing.
Okay, but not for two hundred and forty, like, I, I, I couldn't think that my ears were hearing that correctly. So it's fifty-six thousand.
For the, for the Chromebooks, yes, it's fifty-six thousand. They're about, uh, two hundred and, I think we use like a two hundred and thirty-dollar price point or so per device, um, that we're, we've been purchasing.
And this is probably, again, forgive the, anyway, I'm not gonna call it a silly question, cause that's not right, but, um, um, we have like about two hundred and twenty-four seniors who were issued ran new Chromebooks at the beginning of this year. And so they return those, right?
Yeah, so Gianna, these would be part of the inventory we already had, so they're included in the full distribution for all, for all students. So these are replacing, maybe not the seniors devices, but devices that are part of our inventory. So out of the, say, twenty-six hundred for grades one through twelve, who have a device that had been issued to them, two hundred and forty-five of them are going to be out of, um, they're no longer going to be, they're, they're at their end of useful life. We have to replace them because they're no longer gonna be supported by the manufacturer. Um, so we'll continue to still have twenty-six hundred. And we'll continue with a one-to-one program next year, but we have to replace two hundred and forty-five of them because they're no longer gonna be usable next year.
So they're currently in play?
They're in play already, yeah.
Okay.
They might not be the, the seniors might not have them, but somebody has them that will have to get, exchange it out for next year.
Okay, thank you, cause I was like, why are we, like, yeah, okay.
Yeah, they're part of our inventory.
All right, thanks, Tom.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions about this? I don't hear any, so there is a possible motion. There are no more questions. Kevin, you seem to be speaking.
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approved the use of anticipated fiscal year twenty-one end-of-year funds in the amount of up to four hundred fourteen thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents as designated in the document titled FY twenty-one Budget Investment Proposal and dated January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Sarah, second.
Second.
Are there, is there any more discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me, so it passes six-zero. Next up is a, thank you, uh, Mr. Mazza, as always. Thank you, Paul, um, Policy Sub is up next. Announce your meeting.
We had to reschedule the meeting, and it's coming up next week.
Diane, do we have that, do we have a date for Policy Sub, if we pin that down?
February first.
February first, okay.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, Curriculum Sub?
We're meeting Thursday.
Thank you. And Evaluation Sub?
You're muted, Bronwyn.
We met on January fourteenth. Uh, Dr. O'Shea presented his mid-year self-assessment, which can be found in the school committee packet. Um, we also discussed some training Dr. O'Shea is going to discuss for you.
Uh, really, uh, so one of the things that we chatted with the Evaluation Sub about was, um, some evaluator training, that we, we mentioned it earlier in the meeting. Um, we are interested in ensuring that our practices are calibrated and that we are observing the right things. Earlier in this meeting, we talked about, you know, how we can ensure that, you know, we're, there's some observable practice relating to, um, uh, culturally responsive teaching practice and some of the anti-racism initiatives, so, uh, we'll be sure to, uh, uh, ask our trainer to, uh, incorporate that into the, into the training that we're going to do with all of our evaluators, uh, across the district. So thank you to Sue for uh, pulling that together into, um, securing the services of, of someone who is, uh, really widely respected, um, across the state for, for work in this area and other areas, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we're, next order, we have no ongoing business, and under new business, we have Green Communities Grant and Charging Station at Long Meadow High School.
Yeah, so I, I, I'm happy to make that motion since I'm the one who requested it. Um, so I move that the school committee approve and support the Green Communities Grant application from the town of Long Meadow. That will include the installation of electric vehicle charging station at Long Meadow High School.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I have a question. How, how is charging being paid for, Kevin?
Uh, the way that we're gonna pay for it is not that the town is gonna pay for it. Uh, there's going to be, uh, you know, essentially a credit card swipe or Apple Pay or something like that. I don't know exactly what. But whoever is using the charging station will pay for the electricity.
Point operation would be cool. Uh, Jamie, you were about to ask a question?
I was gonna ask the same question. I guess just, is to follow up to it. Um, so how many, how many of these stations will there be? Will there be a lot of people congregating? And how long does it take to charge an electric vehicle? I have no idea.
Yeah, it depends a lot, um, based on what kind of charging station we get, and we haven't figured out any of those details. I mean, the, the Tesla ones can charge a Tesla very quickly in like an hour, hour and a half. Um, but a lot of them are a lot longer. Uh, so I think that's an important thing. Somebody's breaking into the room of it. Interesting. Um, so, uh, but initially.
He locked you in, Kevin, that's all.
Stuck here all night. Um, so, uh, the, to the first part of the question, I think initially, we're just gonna go for two uh, charging stations, um, and, and see how it goes. I mean, I think that, that some of the questions are like, you know, where would they be? Um, and all that stuff. And, and honestly, we haven't worked those details out yet. Uh, I think really what we're looking for is just a, a vote of support. Um, and, and again, it's no guarantee we're gonna get the grant, and then if we get the grant, we're going to have to work with engineers to figure out where this can go. Uh, but our proposal is for, uh, a dual charging station. It'll be one station that'll, uh, work with two parking spots, so it'll just be two parking spots initially.
Got it, got it, okay.
Thank you. The, the where was gonna be my next question, so thank you for addressing that. We are, the, the motion is to approve and support the application. Correct?
Yep.
And then we'll, we'll find out later some more of the details, but the application definitely is saying the individual with the car is the one paying for the service, correct?
Yep.
Thank you. Gianna?
And I'm just wondering, is there a way to, like, I'm a little nervous saying I support and app, I approve and support an application, but I, can we, can we approve and support moving forward with the, like, I don't know if I'm saying this right, but I just feel like if I'm not actually looking at the actual application, like.
I have an idea for you, Gianna. Maybe taking out the approve and, and it just says support the application of? We're voting that we're gonna support this application. We want you to get us more information. Uh, if you were to come back and say it's gonna be in the middle of the ho- high school horseshoe, we might have an objection.
Yeah.
What you mean, basically, right? Gianna?
Yeah, I, you know, I love the idea. I just wanna, you know, putting my vote to something.
And, and, yeah, and, and Gianna, that makes perfect sense. And, and just so that everybody knows, the application isn't due until April. Um, the town manager really just wanted to make sure that if she put the time into doing this, that we would support it, um, and that she wouldn't get blindsided, you know, in March where the committee said like, whoa, we don't want any of this going on in the high school. So that's what we're looking for. So I, I would be very happy to amend the motion, uh, so that it just said um, to support the, the application. And again, I'm happy to bring back to the committee the actual application once we have it.
Fantastic. Is there a second for, so go ahead, Jamie?
I'll, I'll second it, but, um, so I thought we were already past that point, right? Are you gonna do a second motion? Can I ask a few more?
If he's going to amend his motion, then we, yes, have to do it.
Okay. So can I just ask, uh, Tom, are you comfortable from, like, is this all in the town's liability and not on us if, you know, this thing blows up? You know, or somebody does something at that point? You know, what, I don't know what somebody would do there, not do there, but is that, is that not on the schools? That's on the town, right? I'm assuming, cause it's town.
We're all under the same umbrella when it comes to liability. We're, we're, we're under the same insurance, so I don't know, that will be pointing fingers who's, who's responsible, but yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm good with it.
And if it breaks down, it's the town's problem. It's, has nothing to do with the schools?
I mean, I'm assuming there'll be a vendor to, to fix it if there's issues and, and that, so, yeah.
I'm good.
So can we, just for the record, so Diane has this correctly. Are we going, Kevin, you amended your motion, is that correct? And Jamie said he would, do we have to do the same person second it? Or can it be Jamie? Jamie said he would second it. Any discussion on the motion now being to support taking out the words approve and, and support the Green Communities Grant application? Any more discussion? Seeing none? We'll call for a vote. Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. It passes six-zero. And we are, the last possible motion on our list.
I move that the school committee adjourn the open session of the January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one school committee meeting to meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, Purpose Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A, B, C, D, E, F, H. And Purpose Seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings, to not reconvene into open session.
Is there a second?
Second.
So reminder, we will, the school committee will adjourn the open session of the January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one school committee meeting to meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, Purpose Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective barney, bargaining with units A, B, C, D, E, F, H. And Purpose Seven, consideration of release, release of executive session minutes of previous meetings, to not reconvene into open session. This requires a roll call vote. Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me, six-o. We are adjourned from public session.